Good evening. This is a continuation, uh, hearing on the, uh, the 40B proposed development on Bedford Street, which is Route 18. Um, with, with us tonight is town council, various department heads, and Lynn Steed, who's technical assistant from, through the state. So, the proposal for tonight, I should say, the, the plan for tonight is this. Uh, the applicant and his representatives are here. They're gonna update us on anything they may have updated from the last meeting. Um, we have department heads here, uh, as people had requested. There were some questions raised, uh, and so the department heads have shown up. However, the plan is gonna be this. The, uh, applicant or its representative will present any new information or new things that we might have caught up on from last meeting. I know that you guys heard some of the questions. Um, but at a certain time, we're gonna turn the program over to Ms. Steed, who is, uh, for lack of better terms, a 40B expert. She is basically gonna, uh, teach, instruct, uh, the process. I have been through it before on Wayside Farm, which is the only other 40B we have in town that fits this thing. Her presentation will undoubtedly answer a lot of questions that, that people have. So, you, again, we're all gonna pay attention to that because there are things that people are gonna learn about these type of developments. Uh, given the timeframe, we will, we will certainly, she has certainly agreed to entertain questions. It would be about her presentation and, and the process and whatnot. Um, we, we, we only have this school for a period of time, couple hours. Then the town has to pay the schools to use the town building. No, that makes sense, but I understand. They have supplied us with custodial services tonight. Normally, the school will be closed. Um, the air conditioning's working a little bit better. Um, so, uh, without further ado, uh, Mr. Freeman, you wanna, you know, give sort of an overview from last time? Peter Freeman, the attorney for the applicant.
No.
Is that on? It is on.
Well, then I'll put it like I'm singing, I guess. Now I can.
Caraoke keeps reverberating.
Reverberating. You don't wanna hear me sing. Probably don't wanna hear me talk either, but in any case, for the record, Peter Freeman representing the applicant, Rob Celiberty is here, and we have Deb Keller, our engineer, civil engineer, who will not be here last night.
Can I stop you for one second? Just, just 'cause this is housekeeping. Uh, just, we, we received some documentation that we, that what I do is the documentation we receive, I have to enter it into the record. Not that it, it doesn't go anywhere, it goes in the file. Uh, on August 5th, I received a, a, uh, addressed to me, the site civil technical review letter number one. It was from my environmental partners. Environmental partners is our engineers on the project. The town, the town is using. Uh, on August 6th, uh, I received a traffic peer review. They, what that means is they reviewed their traffic review. Uh, and I think that is all I've received. I did receive from, from, uh, the town, uh, that they just reviewed some of the questions that were brought forward at our last meeting. Mr. Freeman, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Certainly, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finally, Jeff Bandini, our traffic expert, was here last time, and he's here again. So, as you said, I'm just gonna briefly go through the responses that we put together and sent in and identify some of the things that were in the package without going through them in detail with our team here. If you have questions, naturally, we can answer them. On the environmental partners peer review, we appreciate their having done it and sent it in on Monday, but talking with staff, Dorothy Simpson and the zoning, I'm sorry, I forget who, what the name of the other woman, but it's agreed that we're not gonna have responses. There's no presentation. Environmental partners is not here tonight, and so we're not gonna respond. We'll talk later about the next continued date, you know, to give time for the peer review to take place, but I just wanted the public to be aware of that as well. So, what we submitted, in addition to the, um, the letter or email with a few points which I'll summarize, we submitted responses to the Board of Health letter.
Hold on a minute, Mr. Freeman. You can't hear still?
It's, it's like an echo. It's an echo.
I'm happy to turn around. I'm, I'm happy to turn around. I mean, I know the microphone.
There's, I, I know there's an echo because we're hearing it too. Believe it or not, it's better than last time.
I mean, I can.
I, I don't disagree, but you know what? Maybe stand up. Peter, 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 excuse me, Peter, can you maybe stand at that mic and see if it's any better? See if it's any better.
Will it be recorded?
Seems about right. Is this any better, folks? Okay, good. Glad it was the microphone as opposed to me. So, sure thing. Thank you. So, um, in the email that we submitted, which was a summary of some responses, there had been a question about phase one and how many triplexes and how many duplexes. So, there are 26 triplexes and one duplex. There was also a question about mailbox drive-up and the parking spaces being provided or not provided. So, we've now revised the plan, sent in a revised plan for phase one that shows some area where there is space for parking related to the mailboxes. That was that question. Uh, there was question about overall parking, and we submitted through Jeff Bandini, uh, statistics from ITE, which is the Institute for Transportation Engineers. And as I said, I'm not gonna go into the details. If, with questions coming up later, if they do, Jeff can provide the details. So, we have responded to that. We're also pointing out that, you know, the place will be professionally managed, and it does make a big difference. So, there'll be policies and rules and in the leases, uh, spaces, uh, conditions related to parking, and it'll be tightly monitored and managed. And then there was a question. I know there was, were several questions and discussion about the number of school-aged kids. We don't think that the project will generate any, we're near as much as what was discussed. I don't know if the school, uh, department folks are here, but I know that they have figures and, you know, they can certainly present. And then there's some questions about fire department apparatus built. Guess it's still on. And yes, the fire department, uh, does not need any new equipment, and they're satisfied. In fact, there is one of the submissions that I think the chairman just, uh, read into the record, uh, responses from the fire department. So, and I know I'm, I'm going rather generally, and it's not in any way intended to avoid things. It's just that if there are questions, uh, related to department folks, I think they're here. And like I said, our professionals are here if there are other questions. And then, yeah, there was some question or I think misunderstanding about the sewer main crossing Beaver Brook. Uh, it's not crossing Beaver Brook. And then there were questions about water capacity, and per the water department itself, there is sufficient water capacity for the development. There were questions about Winter Street and flooding there, high groundwater. Basically, what we said is the proposed design for phase one will retain all drainage onsite and actually improve the current situation. With the installation of new detention basins and roadway drainage, all drawings will be retained onsite, all drainage, not the drawings. All drainage will be retained onsite and perk onsite rather than running onto Winter Street. Uh, the current design will improve those current conditions. And then the traffic study, there were condition, there were questions, including that, and it is correct, that it was actually done, the counts were done about three years ago. Uh, we are gonna update them. Jeff Bandini has, um, looked at the report. Again, we're not responding to the peer review tonight because it's detailed and we wanna have a detailed response, but it is acknowledged that we will do, redo some of the traffic counts. Um, I think there was something else. And by the way, just so the public knows, the reason we did it early on is because this is a local initiative program project, so the select board in the town wanted to see a traffic study at that time, so that's why it was done early. Trash pickup, the trash pickup is proposed as private for the apartments and public for the townhouses. The trash pickup will be once a week for the townhouses, which is pretty customary. And then there were questions about the, uh, Winter Street being inadequate and inadequate width for construction vehicles. Uh, the roadway is actually 24 feet, which is standard. The issue is trees from wooded lots not being trimmed, and they will be. Prior to construction, the trees will be, uh, cleared or trimmed. Construction vehicles will be restricted to travel from Route 14 to Beaver Street to Winter Street, and we attached a so-called traffic mitigation plan that the board can review and discuss. So, those are basically the responses that we submitted. Just to further tell you, so part of this submission was, were responses to the Board of Health letter, which I think I already mentioned. There are also the Institute of Transportation, uh, Engineers parking generation figures, which I mentioned, uh, the phase one parking revised plan, which I mentioned in terms of the area near the, uh, mailboxes. And again, a plan, uh, not a narrative, but a plan describing the, uh, the traffic management plan. So, that really is what we wanted to just quickly go over tonight. Uh, the reports from the, uh, from the departments were acknowledged, and as I said, that's really what we intend to do tonight. Sorry with my back to the board, but I guess I can't face everybody at once. So, anyway, that's really our side for now, and our team is here for questions. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Wait a second. Does anybody on the board have any question pertaining to what, we're trying to keep it to what he said tonight because obviously we went through earlier, and we're gonna have another presentation. I've got a couple of people that I need to have speak. Did they, may the board have anything for Mr. Freeman or his, any of your team? So, even though we talked about the traffic, uh, study, it's, there's gonna be one redone. Um, even though during COVID, they were given a mathematical equation, they could use an algorithm, it's the age of this that's gonna be redone. So, there's, so there's gonna be a new traffic study done that's gonna be reviewed by our engineer. Uh, that won't be done for September. So, just, just to let you know right now, do I, what, what do we, what do we agree on for the next meeting for this project October?
If, if that's what the.
Yeah, I talked to him.
Go ahead. If you want to add, feel free.
Sure. I, I think, I think as far as Highland Suite LDS Consulting Group for the record, um, I think for the next meeting, we just perhaps wanna hear from the development team as to when they think they can respond to the traffic peer review and the civil peer review.
Right.
Because based on what those dates are, then our peer reviewers are gonna need a week or 10 days to respond. So, we wanna make sure that, and, and they can pick a topic. They can decide they wanna do, you know, traffic next time or civil next time. But I think, I think we just wanna make sure that we're realistic because I know the, the board has other business, um, in August. So, Peter, what is your team thinking?
Sure. Um, I discussed that with our team. So, October, uh, likely mid-October because the day is August 7th.
Yeah. We have this, we have, uh,
Okay.
set up a date of October. Do you remember the day we put in for it? It would be, it was the first Wednesday, I think, in October.
Second.
We have it, we have it. Uh, Mr. Freeman, we, we reserved the school for October 2nd.
We haven't reserved.
Well, we haven't reserved yet, but that's the date we were going to. Is that, is that sufficient for?
Or the 9th.
Can you go to the 9th?
Excuse me, boss. Just to share with you, it's Rashaana.
On the 2nd.
Oh, yeah, I won't be here.
All right. So, let's go, let's go to the 9th.
Is that where you can fight it?
Pardon?
Is that where we can fight, fight that or something?
No, no. So, let me, let me explain first. Well, we're just getting a date now for, so, so they have to do studies.
Do you think you can have more say once it continues?
Today?
As townspeople, yes.
Well, to.
I have some comments and what he had to say.
Well, if you have a comment here to say, I'll let you, I'll let you have a comment. Yes. I'm just trying to, just trying to get the schedule done so that we'd, so that, so that we won't be here next Septe, we won't be here in September in case people leave during some of the presentation. Uh, we're gonna, October 9th.
October 9th. I can find and schedule.
No new notices go out unless it's changed, but October 9th, just so you know ahead of time. That's the date of the next meeting. Um, anybody, uh, anybody here have any questions? I will entertain you to come up to the microphone, identify yourself, and.
No, no, we wanna hear from the department heads.
Oh, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do, we're gonna hear from the department heads first.
Thank you.
And I don't, I don't know how we wanna do it. Uh, I'm gonna ask you here for the selectmen first. Mr. Spigot, we've been on this project for quite a while.
Yeah, use that mic. We'll see if we can hear. We have it still in trouble.
Thank you. All right. So, my name is Peter Spigot. I'm on the Board of Selectmen for the last, I guess, four years it's been so far. Um, been one of the lead people on this quarter, as we call it. Uh, this started back in 2017, discussions with the city of Brockton. I think what we have to keep in mind here is that what we were trying to do was present the body, uh, that would be the residence, an opportunity in an area that we could develop some commercial as well as some residential area for, uh, our tax base. That was the, the goal. Our job as select, the select board is to present opportunities, and we felt like this was one with the city of Brockton that we could put forth. So, we move ahead after a lot of discussions, uh, with the city of Brockton, and finally coming up with a, an agreement to figure out a district. Our district was put into place in 2022. It goes from the Whitman line on Route 18, um, down to Highland Street, and then can, cut, covers all the way through up to Summer Street, um, to Winter Street. So, it's about 300 acres, I guess, of, of property. Of that property, uh, there was a development that was being discussed, and that would be Mr. Sorabelli's development at the time. Uh, he was still presenting some opportunities, uh, that he wanted to do on that area. So, when we discussed with everybody on that quarter, we go from not only Rob, but also from, uh, the Paytons area, the new Gray Stop Building, which has had two different or three different contractors that had owned it at that time, Bobby D Motors, uh, there's a daycare, uh, down the end. So, we had to talk to each business in order to move the project forward. So, all these discussions went on. When we decided it was gonna be an opportunity, that's when we started to discuss it with the public. So, uh, I went back just to get some research, uh, of what we did. We've had at least five public meetings, uh, that we've discussed this. We had a public forum right here. I know there's a couple of people here that were at that forum, and at the time, what we were trying to do is we're proposing for the town meeting in September of 2022. We were, uh, excuse me, May of 2022, we had to do two things. We had to make a district, and then we had to get funding. And at that time, the district was pointed out, when I just explained, and the projects that we had proposed, one of them being, uh, this project over here, was put in front in questions and answers. It's a two, two-hour video online still that answers a number of questions. We had the schools, uh, there. We had DPW, we had fire, we had police. A lot of them discussed some of the issues that came up. And again, I wanna make sure that, like, this just didn't happen overnight. Like, this isn't the first time. This has been a, a three, four-year project that's gone on. Now, maybe it's the first time some of you've heard about it, but I can assure you that it's been discussed numerous times at numerous meetings where, you know, this board is certainly not here, and I can speak for myself and I think for David and for Carol, that, you know, we're here only to present an opportunity, and that's what we did. We went to, uh, a town meeting, and it was unanimously passed to move that district. And in that district was, was this project, and it was discussed at the time. So, you know, I just wanna make it clear that there was nothing being pulled over everybody's eyes, you know? I mean, I'm not one to go into a lot of the social media stuff, but it, it just didn't happen that way. I mean, we've, we've presented it to everyone in town in one way or the other, whether it be through the schools, through the department meetings, committee meetings, or even from our own public hearing. So, at this point, uh, I, I understand you, you, you want answers, and you, you wanna know what's gonna happen, but again, keep in mind, our job, at least the way I see it, is to find opportunities and present them. And if they pass, they pass. If they don't, they don't. I mean, that's just the way it is. So, that's kind of the, the timeline. Like I said, it's, it's been a long process. I will say that, you know, when I sat up here back in 2022, uh, I was asking for $11 million. Uh, since that time, myself, John Haynes, and the rest of our team have brought in $7 million in, in grants, and that's funding from not only state level, but also from a local level. So, you know, we've really done the work to try to not just get this project moving along, but also the Gray Stop Project, getting something in there, and then the rest of the year. We hope this quarter turns into, uh, an industrial area, more so than just a housing area. But, you know, in order to get the money and the funding, the, the state and the federal government are asking for two things, and this has been the way it's been forever, jobs and housing. And, you know, we have to at least present those opportunities in, in order for that to happen. So, you know, we've done our, what I think, we've done our job, uh, to, to try to get this, that information out so that everybody understands. So, I appreciate the couple of minutes just to, you know, let, let it be known. And, you know, I'm certainly open. We have board meetings at least twice a month, if not more. Uh, and if anyone's, you know, has an opportunity to come to those meetings and ask questions or even pick up a phone, I'm a pretty easy person to find, you know, I'm more happy to discuss this. I mean, it's to the point now where people don't want me here to talk about anymore because I've been talking about it for so long. But, you know, this is the plan, and like I said, it's been put forth, uh, for a long period of time, and, you know, that's, that's kinda where we're at. I know we have other department heads here that will discuss some of the more detailed questions that's going on, but I did wanna make it clear that, you know, we have, we have worked a, a long period of time to try to, to try to get this stuff going.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, Greg Windsor, the fire department.
Hey, I was hoping you'd pick me first.
Well, we feel at least controversial.
Yeah. So, um, Craig Windsor, deputy fire chief. The, uh, the actual fire chief is currently relaxing somewhere on an island. Um, so he, uh, he grabbed a few of the questions that came up during the last period, uh, last meeting, and did some, uh, fire chief math and stuff like that. So, as the, uh, the applicants have already noted, uh, there is, uh, no, no anticipation that we'll need new equipment to serve these proposal, proposed buildings, uh, proposed occupancies. Um, our apparatus currently is competitive with anything in Plymouth County. So, we have sufficient equipment. Increasing calls, uh, that's kinda, that's kinda risky. Um, all we can really base it on is our population as it sits and our call volume averaged over a few years. So, we took, uh, 2023, we had about, uh, 14,382 residents in town. We did 2,555 calls for service. That's both fire and EMS. And, um, turns out, you know, if we, if we do a little math, uh, it's about .17 calls per resident. So, now trying to guess the number of residents that will come with 240 units, a little tricky. So, we did it a couple ways. Uh, if it's three residents per unit, we expect our call volume to increase by 20, 128 calls per year. If it's four residents per unit, uh, we expect our call volume to increase by 170 calls per year. So, one every other day or so, yeah, we can cover it. We, we recently upped our staffing from, uh, five-member teams to six-member teams for the first time in about 11 years, I think. So, we should be able to absorb this. Uh, with that being said, we have single-family residences that we have gone to more than 200 times in one year. So, it's, it's difficult to estimate, you know? That's extremely rare, uh, to have that kinda situation. But, we feel we can cover it, uh, as we sit today. Personnel, we've got that. Uh, we do not, uh, the chief does not anticipate any increased costs as it relates to this project for firing EMS services. Personally, with my opinion, not necessarily the opinion that matters in the fire department, I'd rather work in new construction than some of these legacy buildings, legacy apartments. They tend to be risky, tricky, steep stairs, narrow hallways, poorly lit. Uh, if it's up to me, I'd rather work in a new building. So, uh, do you wanna take?
That's fine. Now, what, uh.
I have a question in the back. Do you want me to take that, or do you wanna wait till after?
Yeah. Do, do someone have a question directed to deputy chief?
Hi.
Okay. Well, we, you have to come up to the microphone so everybody can hear. We're trying to limit some of the, but since, you know, you, you're there.
Yeah. I didn't know what the protocol was. Being first and all.
You gotta state your name and your address.
Wendy Williams, Union Street.
Yeah.
Do you take into consideration the signature healthcare building that's gonna be adding on? Will you be servicing that? And will you be servicing any emergencies that happen at the 400,000 square foot empty building?
Yes. They're all within our jurisdiction.
Is this all in consideration?
Yeah. Uh, that, I mean, we're currently serving them. We're, we're not, we're not doing the math on increases on those buildings because there's nothing proposed right now. We've already absorbed the warehouse, uh, appropriately. We have our anticipated, uh, call volume for the warehouse back when the warehouse was being planned.
So, when that happens, you will be servicing these things, correct?
We service everything in Eastford, Florida.
But in addition to this metal brick thing, isn't that gonna cause a huge impact? Aren't we going to have to bring in more trucks and more?
I, I don't mean to go up, but, but the signature thing, it, it has to be sort of focused on this particular project. The, the signature thing is, is non-existent right now, any, any new addition. Uh, and the met, and the building is there, so that's already there when you're talking about your, and, and so, so that's out of.
But it's empty.
Right. But, but, and, and, but they still have to service it even today if something happens.
It's actually more likely.
So, so I, I, again, I, I notice I could answer a little bit hard of this, but we have to focus on this particular project because, like, the, like, the second signature building has been, has been in plan for, since I've been in town, even before the first one was built, and they haven't done anything. So, you, we, you, you can't, you're right. The building's empty there now, and, and it might be filled. We don't know. There's a lot of empty warehouses around this area. We just, I was discussing that today with people. But, um, he, I've asked the department heads, or we've asked the department heads to come in to talk about the impact this project would have, and I, I, I think he addressed it pretty well. Because that would, that would be the same in any new building. You're gonna have to cover it. If we put new houses off of Central Street where I live.
We absorbed the Compass Medical Building when they came in. We absorbed, recently absorbed 401 North Bedford Street, which is another walk-in clinic. It's.
Yeah.
We, we can't pick and choose who we serve and what these projects are gonna be. Looking at this project that's proposed before us tonight, these are the numbers that the chief came up with, and we can absorb this project.
Just with his project?
Yep. It, it's not speculating on future projects or anything like that that we haven't seen yet. Looking at this project, those are the numbers the chief came up with.
Thank you, deputy chief. Uh, the chief? Uh, Greg, could you hold, Ms. Sweet had a question for you.
Um, I just wanna know if you have been able to provide the size of your fire trucks to the development team so that they can work on an auto-turn analysis, just to so that vehicles can get through the site?
In, in general, those are, that's done during the, the subdivision plans and the site planning. Um, the proposals as before us are pretty standard, 20-foot wide roadway, that kinda stuff, uh, pretty, pretty standard across the board. But, we do confirm when the planning board receives a subdivision plan, for example, or a site plan for review, we, we have a chance to review it, and that's when we will provide our specific apparatus stuff, but our stuff's pretty generic.
So, just, um, so this is essentially that site plan review process that the ZVA is doing? So, just to maybe get out ahead of, ahead of that, I think it was probably mentioned in the traffic peer review, if, if it's not a lot of trouble at some point, if you can provide the size of your trucks to the development team, then they can make, you know, incorporate that into their, their next, um, round.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, deputy chief. Mr. Free?
Yeah, generally, if, if one of your engineers, one of your engineers can reach out to me, I can get on the apparatus.
I see chief. Thank you, chief. I think.
Thank you.
I think, I don't see any. Does anyone else have a question for the?
I wasn't given a chance to pick up water. I don't know why I was stiffed. So, I thought it was.
You, the what report?
But they said the water supply was out of it. As someone who's been following the.
We haven't had the, we're gonna have the, we're gonna have the public works.
I don't know. We haven't had a chance to vote on this yet. So.
You don't, you don't vote on this?
That's what's not clear. So, why you have a meeting is you're telling us we have no choice but to do what we're now. I followed everything. I tried to be, I heard of it.
Come up here to the mic and identify yourself, please.
No, it makes sense.
We haven't got to the water department yet. I'm going.
Yes, I'm a reporter.
I'm going through each department that's here. Did I see Chief Jenkins here? Okay, I didn't see him. I thought I might have.
He's, he's here.
Oh, there he.
Yeah.
He's in the shadow.
Yeah, come on up, chief. You can't hide back there. Mike Jenkins from the police department.
Good evening. I'll open it up to questions. If, I'd rather start with questions than we can go from there. But based on, just a quick statement, it's not gonna impact our department whatsoever. Um, we feel as though we'd probably see seven to 10 extra calls per week, but based on the manpower, as long as my budget stays intact, I don't get manpower cut. I continue with hiring bodies through attrition. That stays on track. The, the, we. with hiring bodies through attrition, that stays on track, the, the Police Department will have no impact. If I have any questions, I can gladly answer any questions, but based on the current manpower, we could handle the, you know, what's projected.
Thanks, chief.
Any, any questions?
Oh, somebody, you got to come down, you got to come to a mic. I know it's a long way, but you come down, mic, identify yourself.
We have, right now, we have five adult cells and one juvenile cell, one juvenile slash female cell.
Okay. If the state fills the apartment buildings, which is 160 units, and you end up with 20 or 30 illegal immigrants that you end up arresting, where are you housing them?
I, I, I'm going to take your question as not pertinent tonight.
I'm going to refrain from answering that.
No, it's, no, it's not a good, because, because what, what we, what we have here is going to be privately owned apartments, they've got, it's under the affordable, not low income, not migrant shelter, it's going to...
Just, just interject, if we ever ran into something like that, which, I've been in this town for 27-plus years, I spent seven years in Abington, if we ever needed mutual aid, there's the Plymouth County Corrections, I mean, there'd be things in place, if we ran into an incident like that, or if we run into an incident like that right now, we needed more cells than for bodies, we have plans in place. So, I don't anticipate that being a problem, but i- if there's certain things like that, we have plans in place for a lot of different things. And if, if we ever needed to arrest more than 20 people, whether it's something, disturbance up there or something else, we'd have no problem handling that.
The reason I ask is because Waymouth has the new apartment buildings, Whitman's got them, Brockton's got them, and every single town that has them, the state is putting in the illegals and paying for it, and then the crime rate goes up. And I've even seen lizards or prostitutes in the center of Whitman. So, that's a big issue.
We stay on top of it, and I mean, I, I can just speak for East Bridgewater, I could also, we do, the chiefs meet quite frequently, but in East Bridgewater, we're pretty proactive on it. I mean, going forward, you know, if, if we have to face certain things, then we'll, we'll cross that when we come to it, but right now, I, I feel as though we could handle the impact.
Okay. If everybody's done with questions for the Police Department, could I hit on a couple of issues?
Well, I'm going to have other department heads speak first.
Okay.
Excuse me, miss, if you want to speak, please come to the mic and identify yourself. I don't mean to...
This is the last time for this.
No, I don't mind your comment, but you...
I just don't know why we have a town meeting if we don't vote, we don't have a say. This whole time I have gone, because I'm told we can't...
Ma'am, 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 ma'am.
Let me clarify something, let me clarify something. This is not a town meeting.
I know, but I, and last I went to, it wasn't mentioned, and I was told that the townspeople had no say in this project, even though no one feels it benefits the town, and it sums the eyes making money somewhere, and it's all our taxes are going to go up, and for what good it is. We aren't, I thought initially we were part of the MBTA water system, but we aren't, so that mandate for this town is not applied by state law. So, I don't know why we have to do this, that's all. And no one, well, tell me.
Do you have a police question?
Let me, let me, Michael.
Can you identify yourself, ma'am?
My name's Stuina Elsmore from Whitman Street.
Michael.
If you look up crime rates in areas and towns, like I go through a map of Brockton, and look at the police logs, there's, in every town that has a high concentration of people, there's always more crime. And how can you have a two-room apartment and guarantee only four people can live there?
Ma'am, I don't know if you realize, I don't mean to interrupt, but...
The police, you're going to be more police, that's all.
Excuse me to interrupt, but I don't know if you realize, since I became chief, I post my stats every month.
Michael.
I put it right on our social media, we keep pretty proactive, so...
I'm, you only have enough, that's all.
Excuse me, miss, I'm going to have, she might have your answer here, Lynn. We need to, we, she won't speak again. Hold on a minute, sir.
Just...
Right, hold on a second.
I know everyone's really anxious about this process, and it's not a process that you're familiar with. If we can get through the department heads into my presentation, I'm going to talk about the process and where, you know, and things you can concentrate on, where you can have input into, to the process. So, I know we're asking you to be patient, you were probably patient at the last meeting, we're just going to ask for a little bit more.
Do you have a question for the chief?
Yeah.
Identify yourself, please.
My name's Tom Wile, I live on 105 Spring Street.
Excuse me for a minute, you got to, we, we need to hear him. If you want to have a conversation, you can go out the lobby, you plan to come back in. These people get a right to speak also. Identify yourself and address, please.
My name's Tom Wile, I live on 105 Spring Street. Now, you said that there's an anticipation that there's going to be more crime.
I didn't say that.
That was, that was the vibe I got, I think everybody got that vibe.
Said more calls.
That you have the capability to cover the crime.
If there is.
If there is.
I didn't say, I didn't anticipate.
Has there been any...
I didn't anticipate calls for service, that could be a 911 accidental, that could be, you know, anything simple, a motor vehicle lockout, I mean, simple things, calls for services, where I didn't say crime, I said calls for service, I, we projected seven to extra, seven to 10 extra calls per week. So, that's, that's maybe one, one or two per day, is based on looking at the numbers and, and some of the figures we did with the Fire Department, where there was three people in the unit, two in the unit. But what I'm saying, based on those projections, and not crime, we could handle that, that call volume, that extra call volume, is what I said.
Do you know offhand if the crime has gone up in the past five years for this town? I know on the Fourth of July, there was a juvenile on juvenile who was shot by another juvenile. That's not something we want to get used to hearing about in East Bridgewater.
If, if you keep up on that news, you can also see that we're very proactive, I take this town very serious. My, my kids were born and raised in this town, I take this community very serious, and we were right on top of that, that's going to happen anywhere nowadays, I hate to say it, and that wasn't, that wasn't random, that was something that's, you know, it was two juveniles involved, and I'll leave it at that.
I know both of them, and I have a three-year-old daughter that I'm very concerned about if that's going to be the new norm for East Bridgewater. That's why we moved into a suburb, not into Brockton, or Dorchester, or Matapan, or any other city. We live in a town that is now trying to become a city, and when you hear about a juvenile on juvenile, that juvenile got the gun somewhere, and if that's going to be things that are happening now in East Bridgewater, and now we've got more people coming, and you, you said, it was said that we talked to Brockton, so clearly, there's a plan for a lot of Brockton people to come in here. And I'm not trying to pick on anyone from Brockton, but there's a lot of crime in Brockton, their schools are a war zone.
Brockton's a city, there's crime in every city. But in regards to East Bridgewater, I feel confident that we can keep this community safe with this project. I'll leave it at that, and then, and any other questions? I honestly, I'm not, I don't mean to cut you short, but I...
No, I appreciate it, I mean, you did answer my question, I just, there's a lot of concern.
I relocated to this community 30 years ago, like I said, my, my children are born and raised in this town, this town is very safe, I can assure you. You're going to have, you're going to have things that do happen here and there, and that's just the world we live in right now. But I feel this community is very safe, I don't feel that this project would impact our public safety, and that's my, my feelings, and I take it very serious.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I got it, yeah, last, last one, we got to move on with the next department heads, because we...
And that could win Thatcher Street.
Yep.
With this, there's going to be more traffic, I mean, it was said, construction, trucks, vehicles, and everything else. On my street alone, the traffic has picked up there, speeders constantly. What is your department going to do to ensure that the streets are safe? I mean, there's kids walking to, you know, standing out there in school buses, on Winter Street and everything else, and they fly 50, 60 miles per hour, so...
Traffic enforcement, I also take it very serious. For the last four or five years, I've written the traffic grants to bring an extra amount of money to this town that is federally funded, so we put traffic enforcement. I've had traffic enforcement people out there probably since April, we do speed enforcement.
I haven't, to be honest with you, I'm afraid to walk on my own street.
We can only put them, I mean, it comes to manpower as well, I mean, but you can only, with that, those grants, you're limited to how much you can spend and how many times you can put out there.
You know, construction trucks.
But we stay on top of it to the best of our abilities, but when, when we get traffic complaints, we, we take care of it.
There's little kids, though, I mean...
There's little kids everywhere.
Right, but now there's going to be construction vehicles and everything else, and they...
Thatcher Street, I'm sorry, has been pretty busy for a long time.
Yeah, but on Spring Street and on Winter Street, I mean, I'm right around the corner from the...
Well, as you have traffic complaints, you're more than welcome to call our station. What we do is we keep a list, and as our offices go out daily, they pick certain areas and they focus on traffic enforcement, so I'm gladly...
I'm sure you're going to...
Well, we have a good list, but we try and keep up on it to the best of our abilities.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm holding you to it, so when you get constant calls from all of us, even around that area, with the, on Winter Street...
Once again, we write a lot of grants to bring a lot of money for traffic enforcement, so...
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to move on, chief, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Who next wants to be on the other side? Mr. Haynes of DPW.
So, I think what we'd like to respond to are concerns that, are questions that were brought up that we identified from last, last month's initial meeting. Attorney Freeman actually identified several of those concerns as well. I know traffic is a significant concern, we will hold off any recommendations or whatnot until the results of the updated traffic studies are provided to us, and we can, we have an opportunity to review them as well. I was encouraged to hear that the project proposes all construction for the Winter Street side development to come in from Route 14 in Whitman, so that will essentially reduce that impact of traffic and concern, construction development and construction equipment on Winter Street by utilizing Route 14 for that period of time during the phase construction. We, again, there was concerns about stormwater and drainage and such brought up. The development will actually be reviewed for stormwater management and stormwater control onsite, that stormwater has to be remediated and dealt with onsite, it can't come off the site as part of the permit, so that will be done. Again, that will also be reviewed and throughout this process, which I think will be, obviously is going to be a relatively extensive process. Trash collection disposal was brought up, again, that is, the intent is, these are going to be HO, HOA, homeowner associations, homeowner associations.
Yeah, it's going to be private.
So, there'll be private ways that will have private trash collection. I must, the apartments, like other apartments, will have, you know, dumpsters located, and they'll have designated areas where those dumpsters will be, they'll be collected on a regular basis. We would recommend, I don't know how much control we have over that, but that the town houses have one private hall or are welcome to participate in the town's program, that's a, an enterprise funded, self-funded program, so the fees that residents pay offset the cost of collection, and that would address a number of those concerns, I think, as well. Wastewater was discussed in onsite septics and such, the town already has entered into an agreement if this, with the developer that the sewer line and capacity is available for the, for that project. And water availability and water usage, I will actually, Jason's here with me tonight, he's got a, got a handle on water supply and such, and maybe he can address some of those, and as well, kind of explain what people think about when we talk about restrict, water restrictions, and how those are established and, and the rationale behind those.
Jason, want you, you want to, yes, you want to ask Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
All right, you come up to the mic, Ms. Wolf, please.
Kathy Wolf, Laurel Street, 272 Laurel. Just a quick question, I know that there's some type of a sewage pipe that's going to be going from Highland over to this complex, to Meadow Brook. Are they going to have their own sewage treatment plant? Because the rest of us don't have that.
There will not be a, per se, sewage treatment plant. The sewer project as a whole has what will be a collector main that will be in the district that Selectman Spigot discussed, so that collection pipe will run from Highland Street northerly towards the Whitman Town Line, through easements in a number of different properties, where we'll have collection points where those prop, where those properties along the line, that flow will be collected, it will go to a pump station, that pump station is located on an easement that's been granted for this project, and then from there, it's a force main that will be, a force sewer main that will go to an interceptor line in the city of Brockton. So, we'll have, there'll be no treatment per se.
Brockton?
Correct.
Identify yourself again, if you'd like it.
Yeah, 1 Palm Street. Quick question, of the volume, regardless of whether it's a small amount or a large amount that's getting pumped into Brockton, what is the cost to the town of East Bridgewater for every gallon that goes pumped into Brockton?
The cost will be essentially a pass-through from the city of Brockton, what their rate will be, it's another reason why a district was established, so that district will be responsible, they'll have a, a fee structure for the, so the, the connections in the district will pay that cost, it'll be passed through there directly.
So, this apartment complex, if it's hooked up to that, they're going to get the bill to pay for whatever flows into Brockton, is that correct?
Correct. It'll be metered just like a water meter.
Except for putting in the, the main lines, whatever you're hooking up, what additional cost is the town of East Bridgewater going to have to eat with all these projects?
I would anticipate that the, there'll be some operational expenses related to, but again, those operational expenses will be offset by essentially the fees collected for the, for the, just like your water bill, they'll, those costs will offset the operational costs.
All right, so are our water bills going to go up because your cost now goes up because of this?
No, that's, again, why we established this, a, a specific district, so that district will have a different water and sewer rate that'll be billed to the units in that district to offset those costs.
Jason, you want to discuss the water? I think I could, Mr. Haynes mentioned you to discuss the water.
I got you back.
Hey, I'm Jason, I'm the water superintendent. I'm going to just read this off and just take questions after I'm done, because I may answer some of them that you have. Given the various levels of restrictions in East Bridgewater, does the town have adequate water supply provided the residents in the development? And that would be yes. What is the expected increase in usage due to the development? And how does that compare versus the normal water usage now? So, we are basically saying that, the math that comes out right, per the, it's going to be about 30 million gallons a year for this development when it's all done. Right now, we pump 336 million gallons a year. We are permitted from the DEP to pump 441.7 million gallons. So, that leaves us with approximately 105 million gallons that we are permitted to pump. So, given that, we have an excess of, I want to say about 75.4 million gallons. That's in excess of our permit that we can pump. The water restrictions that are out today, they are mandated by our Water Management Act that came out in 2022. It's a 20-year permit that the DEP, the state, gives us. So, our restrictions are mandated by the state. We can go by a flow, and that is out of the Taunton River, instead of going by the flow, we just do a yearly water restriction, that is from May through September, and that's how we come up with the water restriction. It's not a water ban, it is a water restriction. So, there's a difference there. Bans will be put on by the state. The state has a group that meets, and they make up the water restrictions, and if it's a ban, they issue that per region. So, now if anybody has any questions, feel free.
I got, we got one here first. Lynn, did you have a question for?
Um, thank you, that was really interesting, very understandable. So, my question for you is, because we're putting up apartment buildings, has there been any pressure testing, water capacity testing related to fire flow?
That has not been done.
Okay.
I do not believe.
All right.
That would be fire flow. They're probably going to be, the major one would be on Route 18 and there would be another one on Winter Street because there are going to be two separate connections.
Okay. So we're just going to add that to our list of requests some, some, someplace down the road for the development team. It may also be in the civil peer review. Thank you.
Just, the, just to add to that, a recommendation we're going to be providing, um, on behalf of Public Works is that for water quality and, and water, um, capacity, that there'd be consideration of actually connecting Winter Street, um, to Bedford Street for, um, to bring the water line through to loop that system.
Oh, cool. Okay. Have you, have you talked with the peer reviewers about that?
Initially, yes.
Okay. Yeah. So just make sure that ends up in writing so that it can get to the peer reviewers to loop that. Great. Thank you.
Any other question, Mr. Trepania? Yes, oh, back.
Nope.
You got to come down to the microphone. Sorry.
Jennifer Huss, 102 Forest Trail. Is your permit an annual permit or is it a five-year permit for the gallons of consumption?
Uh, that is a 20-year permit.
A 20-year permit. So if there's an adjustment in the water, how is that accounted for? If we have water line breaks, your water line, your big main warning, water tanks fail and our consumption drops, we start adding all of these townhomes in and our consumption goes up, but the water lines are becoming old, inadequate. How is that adjusted for? How is it accounted for? For the permits?
For the permit?
Yes.
It's, it's, we're able to pump 441.7 million gallons.
So for over 20 years?
For 20 years. That's correct.
Okay.
That, that is, now-
Every year.
Every year.
Every year.
For 20 years.
But now let's say yes.
Okay.
You can, approach the mic, young lady. Again, come, yeah, but listen, you have to identify yourself and your address, please.
My name is Joanna Elsmore of 214 Whitman Street.
Thank you.
I apologize earlier. I know how the government works. I used to work for the government. I, I apologize for my behavior. But I was told honestly for years that none of us had a say in this. So when all these meetings start and I go talk to town, the superintendent says we never had a say. So if none of us have a say in this, you can't guarantee enough water, nor forecast or redo their water because they were told they had to put in housing for MBTA. And so you can't guarantee that we don't need new housing. You can't guarantee that we won't need new school, please. And know what, well, I, I want a straight answer. Why didn't we get to vote? If it's our town, why didn't we get to vote?
Because the way this is set up, let me explain. The town appoints a zoning board of appeals to hear people that want to divert from the, from the zoning bylaws that we have set. We voted on the zoning bylaws. The whole town voted on those. You come to town meeting every time zoning bylaws introduced, they're voted on. So to deal with the zoning board of appeals, they find volunteers to sit on the zoning board of appeals, which we are. We are volunteers. It's our decision. We are what they call a quasi judicial body. We make decisions based on what's presented to us. So we have to vote.
More addition type?
Yep. So we have to vote. Now, we, as a board, can get sued and we have over the years. And we, we have town council that represent us. Um, and so like if you went to mass courts and you punched my name and you see a lot of lawsuits because some people didn't like what we did, for or against. All right. So, so the way it's set up, the town has entrusted, whether you like it or not, the five of us or whoever's on the board, to, to make decisions regarding zoning boards. So we are the ones that basically either get the compliments or face the math. So this applicant has some zoning bylaw waivers he needs. And the way they set up his comprehensive 40B, we basically get everything put at us. So when, when you, when someone says to you that you don't get to vote, that's true. We vote on what they're asking for. The reality of, they said last meeting, you're absolutely right. Because the town only, their, their, their threshold of affordable housing, not low income, not, you know, affordable housing, the threshold is 3.99% in this town. And whatever the affordable housing, I think for this project is 287,000. I think the, the thing's going to, the affordable unit's going to cost or something. So we, so to, to circumvent any of this, towns, towns and cities have to be at 10% or above. So the state in essence says towns have to, with some exceptions, work with developers, somebody that proposes a 40B and try to come to a solution that's best for the town. I think we did that on Wayside Farm. That's a 40B. Nobody voted on it. I did because I was here, you know, 20 years ago on this board. So while you don't get to vote, you get to put, take input. We sit here, take notes, we review this, this is being taped, and we review the concerns. That's why-
They taken light that we don't have infrastructure of water, sewers down?
That's, and that's why we have department heads.
Help count that, right?
That's why we have department heads. And that's, and that's why we have, so we, so they have an engineer. This gentleman's an engineer right here. Folks, I think that lady and their engineers. We have an engineer that reviews their work. And if there's issues with it, they bring it to their attention. That's why we're not meeting again maybe for a couple of months because they have to do the reviews. And they bring it to their attention. So then what you see today might be a little different, and most likely will because Wayside Farm was different from when it started, might be a little different what you actually see.
I didn't understand that part of-
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay. And then, and part of our role is to explain.
And the world's changed so much in the last few years that what is, what the intent of 2017 isn't the reality of 2024. And in every generation that does this, the seniors always have to worry about getting stuck out for other new people. And it's always hard. Everybody's a lot, a lot under there.
I, I know. I'm a senior. I qualify now. I gotta, I have to apply for Medicaid, Medicare.
Or people get thrown out, but new people get loaded in houses. You, you, but you know it's-
So, so I, so while you think you're getting shut out, you're not, but you, you go through us. But, but we're restricted also by laws on what we have to do. As I said before, a 40B is, and I've fought them before in my business. It's awful hard to overcome, especially, but you can, you can, you can work with the 40B, but especially if you don't have the threshold that the state mandates.
Do we have the ability to make it less units or anything?
Well, we, we, that's why we see the re-peer reviews. I mean, I think you're going to, if you, if you, if you can stay around, I think you're going to see a lot of that in the presentation.
I'll be quiet.
That Ms. Sweet's doing.
Thank you.
All right, sir.
Tom Law, 105 Spring Street. Um, taking into consideration what she said and what the other lady said, how old are the, the pipes that this is going to have to tie into? How old are they? I mean, and the, my concern is if these pipes are old and they need replacement, who does the cost of that fall onto? Does it fall onto us as taxpayers? Or, because that's, that's not a new area over there. It's not a new development. So how old are those pipes really?
The, the Winter Street, I'm unsure of. I can get you that. I can get you that information. They'll be tapping, they'll be tapping off of Winter Street and they will be going into the project and that will all be new. So it's only what's called a tap and sleeve and valve. So they're going to tap off of Winter Street and bring it in. So that'll all be new all the way. So that'll be actually good for us to actually, um, come from Winter Street to Bedford Street for firefighting needs, um, just water quality in general. Um, that, that'll definitely be a plus.
So that's not something that's going to-
Nope.
We're going to, we're going to see an increase because it was a major issue?
Nope.
All right. All right. Thank you.
All right. I'm going, I'm going to, I'm going to answer the question here, but we got to keep moving again. And I want Ms. Sweet to make sure she gets the presentation. Answer questions of the public. Yes?
Got one question for you.
Yeah, you got to introduce yourself.
Jerry Lemian, Northridge Drive. I travel Winter Street pretty much every day. It's very narrow. I'm in a pickup truck with the mirrors out. And if another guy's coming the same way, one of us has to like get out of the way. How do you think a fire truck or a school bus or a construct cement truck, I know the gentleman said it's 24 feet, but that's 12 feet eat with the mirrors out. It's, I think you need more than that.
Yeah.
Who pays for that? And half of this is Whitman. Is Whitman going to pay for their coming in from Win, from Route 14? That's, half of that street is Whitman.
I can't speak to Whitman Street. I, I can say currently pickup trucks, school buses, construction vehicles all travel Winter Street in the, in its current state. Um, the impact of the construction vehicles, again, I think that would be, I was again pleased to hear that it's planned to bring the heavy equipment, the construction, the cement trucks and such off of Route 18, off of Route 18, Route 14 into the development site. So that will limit it on Winter Street.
So that's going to be minimal on Winter Street?
That's my understanding. You know, that's the applicant.
Does East Bridgewater pay for the trimming back some of those trees? It's not all brush. There's some trees that are in the way. Is that you guys paying for that? Trimming the trees back? Or is that the town?
Well, I can speak to, if the trees currently are impacting the flow of traffic, that would be the, the town, which we would do as part of our regular operational maintenance within our department.
Right. And a question for the water guy. So why aren't we calling up tomorrow to have irrigation put in if we're not on a water ban? Because my neighbor has perfectly green grass and ours is going hay. And we're doing our civic, civil duty not to put the water on the grass. Why don't we just all do that if we have plenty of water? It's more of a karma than a-
I got to say, because it's really not-
Right. But I'm just saying.
Even though we have an abundance of water?
Yes.
Even though we have that?
Department has-
We want to, we want to make sure that that lasts.
Conservation.
Yes.
Some of us are suffering and others don't have.
It's, it's, uh, the state has very much come down on all towns to conserve water. And even though you have the pumping capacity to do that, they want you to conserve water. There are some towns that they've taken away water from them in their new Water Management Act. Um, we were right there on the threshold where they didn't, they didn't do that at all. So.
All right. We got to, we got to move it. I did say last question, but sir, if you can make a brief-
Very brief.
Please.
If the winter road or whatever roads are, uh, issue, have an issue because of this development, can you mandate it that they pay for the road to be upgraded and widened to take care of the traffic that it's going to increase? Put the burden on them as a requirement that they pay for the new road if it's necessary, not the taxpayers?
I'm going to have, I'm going to get a dress.
So, um, part of this process is that-
You don't have to explain the process. I just want to make this quick. Just keep that in mind.
All right. I understand what you're saying. Just making a point.
And then the second question is talking about the water for whether millions of gallons extra per year. It comes from an aquifer that's underground. How do you know the volume in that aquifer is adequate to continue pumping that much more water out of it? And if we end up with a major drought and that aquifer drops, how are you going to, uh, explain to people when you're running out of water?
All right. I, I, I hate to do this, sir, but you heard me say last question a couple of times, right? What, what's, what's your question? Identify yourself. This is, we've got to move.
Wait, you need, you really do need to-
I need to move along so you can see that, so you can get a lot of these questions answered when we do the presentation. Go ahead. So identify yourself.
I'll be quick. I'm not making a speech. I'm just asking a question.
Identify yourself, please.
My name is Howard London. I live at 11 Stage Coach Lane. Um, the proposed entrance to Meadowbrook is about maybe 300 yards from the exit and entrance to Wayside. And that's going to be a real choke point when you get cars going in and out, especially during rush hour. The road has been widened across from Wayside, which allows people going south to, to, um, to, um, go around the traffic that's going into Wayside. If you widen the road in that way, I guarantee you it's going to happen. Someone's going to get rear-ended and pushed into oncoming traffic. It's, it's a, it's very poorly designed. So my concern is when you are looking at the entrance and the exit to Meadowbrook, that that be very carefully designed, uh, in a much better way than what is across from Wayside. Also in that section of the street, there are no lights.
So I can, I can-
And at, and the evening, it's treacherous.
I can try to answer that. That will obviously be reviewed as part of the traffic plan.
Thank you.
But, um, I will say that North Bedford Street is Route 18, which is under the jurisdiction of Mass DOT.
Right.
So it will require a Mass DOT road cut permit, uh, which will be granted through their office.
Good. As long as it's addressed in one way or another. Thank you for allowing me to ask my question.
Excuse me. Can you answer the last question that the gentleman asked about the aquifer and the volume?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Um, we did, we did have a drought. I don't know if you remember, but years ago we did. Um, the wells were pulled down greatly. Um, we do take drawdowns on our well, so we measure the aquifer that's around us. We do know that when it's starting to pump, if it, if it gets really close to the screen, um, what I did a couple of years ago, and there's not a lot of towns that do this, that can do this, we put a meter pit into Brockton. So that is on Winter Street. If we all, if we run into an emergency of any kind, we can get fed from Brockton. Um, sometimes that they, they, it's like per, per thousand gallons that we, that we get that from Brockton. But let's say we have a major catastrophe in town and we need water. There's not a lot of towns that can say that they have a backup water supply. And we do. So as something major that hits like that, where we have that emergency system in place. So have we had to use it? Yes. I'm not going to say that we haven't. But that's just because, and that's because over the past years, our wells were not getting rehabbed. And since we've gotten all of our wells rehabbed every single year, we have had adequate water. So it's just been years and years and years that our wells have not been rehabbed. We're finally getting to a point where we're rehabbing these wells and they're lasting much longer and they're pumping more water and they're using less energy.
I think I can speak perhaps to the question specifically about the, uh, aquifer and such. As part of that Water Management Act, which is the state, um, determines, that's a hydrological study that when these wells are put in, part of those hydrological studies evaluate the underground aquifer. And that's how the 20-year permit and how much we can withdraw is determined. So, yeah, there's some science behind that.
So considering now, we don't know that that is-
We need to be careful.
You're a large enough-
Do we look at that?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir.
All right. Um, we got to, we got to, I'm not trying to cut anyone off, but we, we are talking. Thank you very much, Jason. Uh, I'm going to, we, we got, I'm going to, I don't think we need to hear from you tonight. No, I don't think it's necessarily because of what we're waiting for. Uh, I see John Shea. Is he here? Cause the questions were pertinent. John's the school business manager? And there was, there was questions last time and, and John?
Gina's here.
Yeah, that's fine. Assistant Superintendent.
Uh, John Shea, 143 Pond Street. I'm also the school business administrator. Um, I was at the last meeting. There was a lot of discussion about the, uh, number of additional students as a result of this development. Um, I, the, the number that was thrown out a lot was 500. Um, I know the developer, uh, did an estimate based upon a, a study. And he, uh, came up with a number of 88 additional students. So what I did, I took a look at, uh, two studies out there, uh, which provide ratios of school-aged children per housing unit. I also took a look at our current, uh, 40B development Wayside. And I am comfortable, uh, to say that I would estimate between 88 and 98 additional students as a result of this development.
You, again, you, you have to, if you got, you can't talk from the seat. I hate to say it. Let him make his thing and then we'll, you can come up to the microphone. You know, you continue. Are you done with your?
I, I'm done with the-
All right. Does she want to augment that or supplement it? She's, do you have a question for him?
I want them to finish presenting and then I, I need to make a statement if you don't mind.
Gina, just identify yourself.
Gina Williams, 4 Susan's Place, Assistant Superintendent of Schools. Uh, one other thing that Mr. Shea had looked at is our enrollment. Um, and we're down about 300 students since 2017. So our enrollment, um, is considerably less now than it, uh, was in 2017. Uh, also every year, the school district votes school choice. school district votes school choice, which allows students from other communities to come into the, the school district. Certainly, we look at current enrollment before that vote is made, and every year they get to make that determination. So, you know, if we see an increase in enrollment, the school committee can always vote to either adjust school choice or discontinue school choice. You know, certainly, it would be concerning for us if the enrollment was going to significantly impact the district. But what I see trending lately is this project helping the school district in two significant ways. One is the increase in the amount of families that are losing their homes in East Bridgewater. And just by losing their home in East Bridgewater does not mean that the students don't continue to attend school in East Bridgewater. According to McKinney-Vento laws, wherever you originate in school, your child's allowed to stay in school even if you lose your housing. The school district is also responsible for transporting your student as well. So the increase in number of families that are losing their homes qualifying for McKinney-Vento, the students continue to come to school, and the school district pays for the transportation to and from school. This affordable housing allows families to remain in town in an affordable setting. We see the increase in families needing to move in with other families, move in with family members, renting homes, the increase in the amount of homes that are being rented within the community as well. So certainly, affordable housing in the school district would be a benefit to our families as well as a benefit to our students. The other increase we see is the amount of our new teachers leaving the district within the first three years of us hiring them. We're doing a great job of recruiting very talented teachers. The number one reason why they're leaving the school district is because they can't afford to live here, and they find a job closer to where they live. This would be an opportunity for affordable housing for our teachers. I've been in the district 32 years. I will admit, my first five years of teaching, I lived at home. I could not afford to live on my own. I wanted to stay near the community I worked in. It's very difficult for us to, we try to assist our staff in finding housing closer to home. This would be an opportunity for our staff to find affordable housing and remain in our district.
Hey, before you go, Lynn.
No, I, I, you know, I think, I think this is, this is really helpful. Later on, I'll try and go into what income limits are for affordability as well as what rents look like, so people have a better understanding of who the affordable residents might be that are living in the facility. But I do just need to qualify that basically, under fair housing laws, everyone is, you cannot, this project cannot be denied because it may increase school, school enrollment. Everybody has the right to fair housing and to live, you know, in, in a home. And so I think it's absolutely terrific that the superintendent and, you know, that they have actually come up with some figures for you to hear. And it's really just for informational purposes. It's nothing that can be written in, into the permit, and it's not a basis for decision-making by the ZBA. However, it's a wonderful planning tool for the school department. Thank you.
And that's, that's correct. We discussed this, that there are certain things that we can't take into account, and the impact on the school is one of them.
And, and I think, you know, one of the things they pointed out is that many people that move to affordable housing are already in the community and, you know, maybe paying more than a third of their income towards rent or towards, you know, housing costs. So really, what they're saying is that this might be a better option, so people will not be as stressed financially in the community.
Okay. We're gonna try to make it quick so we can get to the presentation. Again, we are time crunched here because of, yeah, go ahead. Identify yourself, please.
Nancy DeChambeau, 448 Bedford Street.
Thank you.
I'm just concerned about the March 7, 2023 meeting for the school budget that I attended, that Liz Legault was saying we need teachers that speak 160 different languages to be in addition to our schools, and that she did admit that we are having a water problem at this school. So, I mean, how many teachers are we going to have to bring in with different languages? If we need 160 different, I mean, we need, this needs to be addressed. Because teachers are expensive, aren't they?
You mentioned that last time, and I don't know where...
Well, I went to the meeting, and did she make it up?
I don't know, because I don't know how to, I don't know how to answer that question that, that 160 languages that I've spoken in East Bridgewater School. I don't know how to answer that question.
Well, that's what she said we needed.
I, Ms. Williams, do you want to attempt to?
Sure. So maybe it was information that was miscommunicated. We have about 160 students who, under the Home Language surveys that are completed when families enroll, that either the, the child or the family qualify for needing services, translation services. We do not have 160 different languages. We have about 12 languages, and we don't hire teachers that have that language. We hire our English Language Learner teachers who help to support students.
I'm just repeating what I heard at a meeting that I came to. I, I just found it bizarre that she said that. I, I don't know.
So for this current year, we used to have one English Language Learner teacher in the district, because obviously our numbers were much lower. We now have three. We did increase for this coming school year. We now have three and a half ELL teachers, one per building, and then one that will help to support the junior, senior high school.
Oh, I didn't know she was anticipating maybe this new development going up, that we were going to need more teachers.
So I don't think there's any significant studies to show that families that live in an apartment or a condo would be more likely to need the services. To the town of East Bridgewater, it is increasing. The world in general is increasing with families coming to the United States with English not being their first language. So for me to say it's not going to increase, I think regardless of whether this was happening, it will continue to increase. However, the numbers that we have right now are being sustained with the staff we have right now.
Yes.
Hester Reed, West Street. I have a question for Mr. Shea. Would you please share those studies that you had mentioned, that you looked at for determining how many students you thought would be entering our school district?
I'm happy.
If you could just post them online for the community to see, for us to see?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. What I'd like to know, anybody can reach out to the department heads. Everything's posted on the public Town of East Bridgewater page, I believe. So if anybody has any direct questions for them, feel free. Anything, feel free to reach out. On that basis, I'm going to sort of close this. Mr. Gardner, do you have anything from the, Mr. Gardner's from the plan, do you have anything at all? Nothing really? I, I want to give you the opportunity because he's been involved for 85 years in the town.
Well, I, I think my, my only comment would be that the, the large apartment buildings on Route 18 have individual access that's going to be granted by the state with some, whatever they're going to require them to do. There's no what you would, equivalent to a roadway or whatever, but the, the triplex units or duplex units, as the case may be, that are off Winter Street, those roadways are going to have to fully meet the subdivision rules and regulations requirements based on, on the way Chapter 40B works. And the expectation is, it, it appears at least with a superficial review of the documents we've seen so far, the intent is to, to build standard roadways with standard sidewalks and all of those requirements. The, the only thing we do note that in the, in the apartment buildings, those projects, that part of the project that's off of Route 18, is, is that the current planned parking doesn't meet even the most minimal state requirements under, under standard parking requirements for, I mean, in the town of East Bridgewater, there's, there's more than three vehicles per residential unit in the town. A large apartment complex with 200 units, give or take a few, with only slightly over one space per unit, doesn't meet even the most simplistic mathematical review of what adequate parking is. So we will be commenting on that in detail, based on state statistics and other 40B projects in that order of magnitude. We're not within walking distance of a MBTA station, so, so that, that, that limited amount of parking, in my opinion, is, is, is just totally inadequate. So we will be responding in writing with some suggestions to the, to the ZBA as, as mandated under the state law. That's how we have to do it, is give you our suggestions, and then it's up to, up to ZBA to make those decisions.
So the Planning Board will be discussing this at their meetings also?
We will be, this is on our agenda for the next meeting.
So you could certainly, so that's a public meeting also, the Planning Board. And again, I'm not sure exactly what it is, but all these meetings are posted at the town hall. There's a bulletin board as you walk into the, right, all the meetings are all there in the court of the open meeting law. I'll say, all right, so I'm going to do now is I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sweet. I think it's, it's important to stay through the presentation. I think it's going to be on the big screen, right? A lot of it?
Yes. I just, I'm not sure whether the developer's going to stay, so I just wanted to kind of go over a few...
He, he wasn't sure.
Few wish list items before, you know, before we move on, sort of based on, on the conversation we had. One of the items is, when is an appropriate time to have a site visit with the board and with their peer reviewers, given where we are in the process? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Sure. Site plan is always good, and it can be done anytime, and it should be discussed and announced at a public meeting like tonight. If you want to set a site visit time and date tonight, that's fine.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we could do something in September, since we're, we'll be meeting again in October.
Sure.
Is that something that we can maybe have you vote to, to work on offline or something like that?
Yeah, I can communicate with the, with the board's permission. I'll, you know, entertain motion. I can communicate with Mr. Freeman to, to set up a meeting. So it coincides with everybody.
If I may, in the 40B guidelines, Lynn, with MHP, say this, it should be set at the public, at an open meeting like tonight. So it can't really be discussed offline.
Do we want to look at a calendar? When is, is it something that you could meet at during, you know, during the day, before work, after work?
Oh, yeah. We, we, we're, we're pretty flexible, because we've done site visits in plenty of places, so we're pretty flexible.
Okay. So maybe we could, we could try and, I'm just going to grab a calendar and throw something out there. I think the holidays are later. Wednesday, September 18th, at 10 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 2 o'clock?
What's your schedule like? What about you?
Is it, is it hard for you to meet during the day?
Yeah, he works in town. How about later in the day? What time do you get?
We could, sometimes we've done a Saturday morning, believe it or not.
We've done, we ourselves have done Saturdays in the past.
We do, or later in the afternoon.
Well, the problem is it gets dark enough.
Would, would that be acceptable, Peter, if we did like the...
Saturday morning at...
Saturday morning, the 21st, at like 9 o'clock or 10 o'clock?
Okay.
All right. Let's pull 10. 10, September 21st?
Yeah, and we'll meet on...
And where do you want to meet? That's actually, maybe we can sort that out, where the developer maybe suggests the best place to meet.
Route 18. Is that driveway?
I'm sorry, what was it? 906?
906 North Bedford Street.
North Bedford. Okay. So we'll, we'll let our peer reviewers know that. And typically, just for sight walks, there's really no discussion amongst board members. People can ask, questions can be asked, but board members can't talk about it. It's kind of weird. But anyway, we'll, we'll set that up. Thank you. And then a couple more requests, since we're sort of going into another round of planning. If you could locate a school bus drop-off and pickup somewhere on the two developments. If it's already there, I apologize. They're tiny, they're tiny. I only have the tiny plans. I don't have the big ones. And I think that's good for me. Thank you.
Sure, that's fine. And Lynn, you and I just discussed this. Since the, the meeting, tonight's meeting is being kept open, although I believe that the public comment period is over, but we will stay. We want to, you know, listen, and if, you know, a question were to come up, but whether it's procedural, such as what Lynn just asked about. So, you know, we'll stay if you want to participate, cooperate. So that's how we see it.
Yeah, you're more than happy to. All right. So I'm going to turn this meeting over to Lynn Sweet.
Sure. So I know that, I think they're going to make my screen go live.
Yeah. So we're, we're going to sit down there to see it.
Okay. Oh, you are? Okay.
We won't, we can't see it here behind us.
Okay. So while she's, while she's working on that, I just wanted to go over the affordability piece. So our company has been hired by money that developers actually pay into the state. So anybody that applies for a comprehensive permit pays an application fee to who they're applying to, but they also pay a technical assistance fee to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. So with communities that see large projects like this, they can ask the state for a grant. And...
Excuse me for one second. I don't mean to interrupt, but I noticed everybody's leaving, and you haven't had full public input in this meeting.
They're, they're not leaving. They're going to sit down so they can see me.
We're just moving down here. So it's going to be on the screen.
It's going to be, I'm going to project on the screen.
I just want to make sure of that. There's public comment time reserved before this meeting ends tonight. Is that agreeable?
Well, she, she, she will entertain questions.
I, there are going to be, there are going to be many more meetings. This, this, this is not...
Well, we're here now, so why not hear it now? Because obviously, the board has to look at the different issues. I'd have to thank Mr. Gardner, because he raised a lot of issues where this whole project does not comply with the current zoning of this town. And if you're going to ignore the zoning for this project, then what about everybody else in the town that has a zoning issue?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. It's discriminatory in favor of this particular group that's going to be burdensome on the town.
Okay.
So my point to you guys as the ZBA is deny this entire project for all the different reasons that have been raised. Let them litigate it. You tie them up in court for five or 10 years, so what? At least it buys the town more time. You need to put a stop to this project. There's plenty of excuses why to put a stop to it. You can hear from the public. The public view is, we don't want this project. So I'm asking you as, as the head of the ZBA, to please take into consideration every single issue that was raised, including Mr. Gardner's issues on zoning and the roads. None of this stuff complies, so therefore it gives you an excuse to deny it. There's many reasons. Please do so.
Thank you. So I'm going to, I'm going to...
Thank you.
I'm, I'm not the enemy here. You know, I'm, I'm here to assist the board. I'm here to make sure that information does get exchanged and that information flows. I'm here to talk about process, and I am here to serve the board and, and the community. So getting back to what I was saying, so the town is not spending any money to hire me. It's actually the board's money to hire me. Peter, do you want to say something before I get into income limits and whatnot?
Sure. Just, just real quickly, and we do listen, we do respect what was said. Just a kind of procedural point of order, that for tonight, the substantive part of the hearing is over for now. I think the intent is that there not be the type of substantive comment on and on. But, but I just want to reassure both, really, the speaker who just spoke and, and everybody else, as we said earlier, those details will be gotten into very heavily when the peer review presents, and we have our responses. To the point that that gentleman made, which certainly that is what 40B entails, is zoning waivers. So Lynn, not to try to tell you what to present, but I think it would be useful if you present, if you present the 40B legal standard and what waivers, you know, mean and how that works. So, thank you.
I, I will. I will. Um, no, I think we're, I think we're okay. I think we're okay. So, so first, I'm going to go into the presentation, but first, I know that there were some comments about who is going to be living in this building and what does the affordability mean. And it's basically 25% of the units will be available for people earning 80% of median income. These units, they're not subsidized units. A subsidized unit means that the government pays, that the, the person living in the unit pays a third of their income towards rent, and the government subsidizes the rest. Sometimes people see public housing as subsidized units. In this particular instance, for someone to be able to afford to live in the affordable unit, in most cases, they need to have an income, they need to have a job. It's called workforce housing. So, and there's lots of different kinds of affordable housing, but what is... So, and there's lots of different kinds of affordable housing, but what is being presented to you today is at 80% of area median income. So what is an income limit look like for somebody living in the affordable housing? For a one-person household, that income limit is $68,500. So think of what your school teachers make, that's who that's geared towards. A two-person household, $78,250. So what does that mean for, you know, what they might be paying in rent? So in, in, this is in, in the Brockton District, a one-bedroom apartment, including all utilities, is $1,834 and a two-bedroom, $2,201. So those rents are below market rate, but they're not poverty-level rents. So I, I just think it's important that people understand that there are different income limits, different populations. And I, you know, I'll just say this on behalf of the developer, this is going to be managed professionally. They will have onsite management, they will have screening procedures when the affordable units are first leased up. There'll be a very public lottery process, there'll be a lot of screening. So there's going to be a lot more oversight on a development like this because of the 40B and because of the affordable units than just sort of your mom and pop, you know, one and two and three, um, bedroom houses. So I am going to switch to my actual MHP presentation, and I don't know if you're able to hit that button to make my screen again. And I'm going to skip over a lot of it because you have, we've already gone through, um, a fair amount of the process. So MHP is the agency that reaches out to me, Massachusetts Housing Partnership. That's the agency that collects all the money from all of the developers across Massachusetts. And so this training program is, is, is pretty universal. Um, if you want information about 40B, we've got a bunch of websites on here and I can ask, um, the town to add this to their website with all the other documents, so that you can get a little bit more background if I haven't answered all of your questions. And, um, I've kind of gone over this slide, which is the, uh, the technical assistant grant. There are, um, technical assistants like me, we, we go to training with the state, we meet and we talk about topics and about, um, you know, legal cases and so on and so forth. We are screened and rehired every few years, so it is a little bit of a, a rigorous process to go to, but I'd like to think that the state is pretty thorough, this is a quasi-governmental agency in, in choosing people. And so the reason, uh, you know, simply that this 40B is in front of you is because the town itself hasn't met minimum statutory requirements and that, right now, it's not in question here, so I'm not going to spend a lot of, a lot of time on that. Or the safe harbors, or the application. Very thorough application, I will say, has been submitted by the developer. The application had with it a, a stormwater management plan, it had a traffic study. Were those perfect? No, they never are, projects are, evolve and develop over time. The town, at the developer's cost, has hired peer reviewers. Their initial peer review reports were delivered over the last couple of days. Those peer review reports are going to really kick the tires on this project. So I encourage you, if you have questions the way that you've been asking them, feel free to email them to the chair or the secretary of the ZBA. We will make sure that those questions reach the peer reviewers. They may not have answers that you like, but we will make sure that that information flows to them.
Excuse me, ma'am, would you please go back to the application? I am quite interested in, in seeing if there is, um, thank you.
Yes.
Oh, so this isn't, okay.
So this is, I'm sorry, these, these are requirements, so when the municipal, and, and sort of because we're at our second hearing, the application has been accepted, so I know, I know it's getting late, um, and I didn't want to, I kind of flipped through it because I, I'm trying to be cognizant of your time, you know, and what's on a plan, and, and I, and, and there's a lot on these plans, but you know what, there's, there's a lot to digest. So the, the board, the officials and the peer reviewers, they're just absorbing everything right now. And so this is basically another statutory, we're, we're there, we've, we've heard the project. Technically, from when the first public hearing is opened, the ZBA has 180 days to review a project. And then close the hearing and then they have time to, um, deliberate and potentially vote on a decision and provide conditions. However, I will say for a project of this size, um, oftentimes, because there is a lot to review, the, the board can ask the developer if everything is going along and there's a lot of back and forth and not everything has been completely reviewed after that six-month period, there can be an extension to that. So although there is a rule, a lot of times there's exceptions to rules. And obviously, the board is going to try really hard to, to keep reviewing things as, as they come in the door, but six months passes quickly. Let's see, so the, these are the deadlines that we just talked about, I'm not going to reiterate them again. We've talked about, um, doing a site visit. Site visit is really important for the board to actually go and see, we all can't, I don't, I don't know, I'm not a really good plan reader, so it's good for me to go and say, oh, well, this is where the entrance is and this is where the houses are. And the peer reviewers will come along and they will look at it for what's important to them, whether it's the traffic peer reviewer or the, um, drainage, you know, civil, civil peer reviewer. So we've got that, we've got that scheduled for a Saturday. And I, you know, I've talked a lot about what the peer reviewers do. And, um, I will be sharing, you know, I've took, taken really good notes today, I'll, I'll be touching base with the peer reviewers. Um, basically just kind of the eyes and ears and extra person for the board, because they've got, they've got all day jobs and this is what my day job is for. Um, so guaranteed, your questions are going to make their way to the peer reviewers, they're going to make their way to the, you know, to, to the department heads, the way that they, that the process has already started. And, and development is a process. It, it takes time, everybody, and, and, and oftentimes, the ZBA process and the peer review process makes the projects better than when they came in, because the developers try really hard, they've got their experts, but oftentimes, they, they don't know everything about what's going on in the community and that's why we go through this public hearing process and you have a say in that process. You don't have a say in the actual decision, but you have a say to exchange information. And so one of the things that is really important to understand is there are some, there's some limitations on reviewing a 40B and what you can comment on. And because in, in Massachusetts, under 40B, the standard is that the regional need for affordable housing outweighs local concerns. And, you know, I'll, I'll just give you an example, we had a project, um, a, a project that had more affordability in Chinatown had 3,000 applicants. That we are having a housing crisis in Massachusetts. We have smaller families, more families, Massachusetts is a wonderful place to live. And so it is very difficult for a town to fight the regional need for affordable housing. So what is, is a local concern, what does that mean? And how, how can you influence the project? And, and that is, and that is tantamount to what Peter was mentioning about, about waivers. Under a 40B process, a developer can ask to waive local bylaws because of this greater need for regional housing. And it, and basically, the board is going to weigh those local concerns against the regional need for affordable housing. So it's very hard to deny a 40B, um, but what the board is going to focus on and what, what all of the department heads have already focused on and much of what you're focusing on is what could impact the health and safety of residents in the community? So you ask that question, do we have enough fire trucks? Do we have enough personnel? Do we have enough police? That is a public safety issue. What's the water quality going to be? That is a public safety issue. So all of the questions you've been asking, they've been trying to answer, that is part of the whole big process. And, and, you know, the developer's goal is that the, at the end of the process, all of those questions get answered and that there is, and, and indeed, that standard, the regional need for affordable housing outweighs local concerns. So that, that may mean that they have higher density on the property. But it also may mean that they're solving a problem that, that existed by treating water on site where now it could just be free-flowing somewhere into someone's backyard. So that is really kind of the crux of the 40B, the crux of the waivers, which you may get more density, but maybe something else is fixed. The developer pays for the, the peer reviewers, the developer's going to be paying, uh, you know, um, a, a building permit fee. Every, every, they're going to be paying city fees, they're going to be, you know, paying real estate taxes. So, so there's kind of, you know, I, I, uh, some, some balancing off there and I think that your asking questions about costs are really good, because I think a lot of those questions got answered today. And, um, sometimes, and this may be something that, you know, that we, that we should talk about, sometimes there are issues that are so technical that we can't sort them out at a public hearing. So it's possible that when the peer reviews come back, um, related to Title V, for example. It may not make sense to discuss it in the public forum, but it may make sense to have the chair of the ZBA, the board of, the health commissioner and the developer go sit at town hall and talk about what, what, what needs to be done and then come back and report. So those are called working sessions. Um, and I think with a project as, as big as this, it's possible, it, it helps to kind of move the process along and, um, and deal with things that are just so technical that, um, it, it's not even going to be understandable in layperson's terms, although I will say that, that the water folks did a really good job of, of, of putting, you know, the, the, the issues into layperson's terms. And I just talked about this, so, so these are areas, if you're going to comment on something, these are the areas that, you know, that you're, that you, that you need to think about, health, safety, environmental. Um, you know, this project, um, has, has a fair amount of open space and, you know, and, and this whole process is, is, is a planning process today. And these are just some legal standards, which I, I don't think are really helpful for you, given where we are in the process at this, at this point. And, um, so I'm going to kind of flip through a few. And so if and when the board feels like it's heard all of the testimony, kind of to use a legal term, all of the information from the developer, all of the information from their peer reviewers, all the information from the department heads and their board members, when they close the hearing, that is when they talk about whether or not they want to, um, take a vote on the project. They close the hearing, and so they have three decisions to make, or three, I'm sorry, not three decisions to make, they have one decision to make and they have three choices of decisions. They can approve the process, the project, the development as it, as it was filed, as it came in today. They can deny the project and say, we don't want it, or they can approve the development with conditions. Most communities, and given that this is what's considered a friendly 40B and we've heard that there has been cooperation between the developer and the community to get this new water resource area in the community, into the community, most decisions end up having conditions in them and we know that some of you suggested conditions tonight. And again, we're going to keep track of all of those. So during their deliberations, the board is going to make a decision as to whether or not the regional need for affordable housing outweighs lo- local concerns and, and, um, come, come to a vote and then come to presumably, um, conditions. There is a lot of, it is very hard to fight a 40B in court. Most, 99.9% of the cases that go to court go in favor of the developer. So I always encourage communities to try and think of those conditions and those things that you think is going to make the development better for you, because it is, again, it is just a very high legal standard to overcome. And I know that you, you know, you were all clapping and you wanted to deny. It's really hard, because what happens when you deny it? What happens when you deny it is that you don't have a say in those conditions. If the developer wins in court, you don't have a say, it gets approved the way that it came in the door. So I, again, will encourage you to think about conditions that might help the neighborhood get through this. The construction management plan, they gave us a plan. I would suggest that we might need some writing to go with that plan. We might need a communication plan to go with the construction management plan. So these are things to start thinking about as we continue through the process. I'm going to finish my presentation and then I will take questions about the process, but not about the project. So this is what I was talking about, which is developers, if, if you, and there is, you know, there's another side, if the conditions are so onerous and so costly to the developer that it's impossible for, to build the project, the developer is going to appeal and it's going to go through court. And again, most likely, they're going to win because the court is going to get rid of those conditions. So I'm sure it feels really unfair to you. I, I don't make the laws, I don't make the rules, I'm here to, you know, inform you about places in which you, you can have influence and help yourself. So, um, so basically, just to sort of finish the process, let's say we do close the hearing in six or eight months. The board deliberates for a couple of months, they make a decision, they issue that decision and everyone is happy. It, it happens, it's rare, but it happens. So what happens next? So the developer actually needs to go back to the state and say, hey, state, we've got this comprehensive permit in hand and we've got all of these conditions. The developer is then going to need to get approval from the state to enter into a document that will regulate the affordable units. They're going to have to show that they have the means, the money, to get the project completed. The developer is going to have to go to the building inspector, I don't know if the building inspector is here. They're going to go with this comprehensive permit that has all the conditions and the building inspector is going to have to tick off one by one that all of those conditions have been met. So the process doesn't end just because the zoning board of appeals gives a decision. There are, again, many sets of eyes, there's the state, there's a building inspector. And there will be ongoing, um, I'm sure in the permit, ongoing obligations of the developer. We already have an agreement with regard to the sewer and there's obligations in there as well. So it is not an overnight process, we know that it's taken many nights for the developers to get here, for the community to get, um, their sewer district. And, um, if there, you know, somebody asked a question, well, what if this or what if that? So we all know the economy changes, we all know the world changes, you know, we all witnessed it during COVID, right? So if something happens and the developer can't meet their obligations under the 40B or they need to change something, they're going to need to come back to the board. If it's a minor change, like they've said, oh, we're going to make our units a little bit smaller or we're going to knock off a couple of units, the board will just hear that. If it's a major change, it, the public hearing is going to need to be opened up again. So again, just issuing the permit doesn't mean, you know, that this is, that this is the, the end of the, the situation. So if there's anything big that comes down the road, they need to come back, back here and, and, and ask, um, is it a minor? And, and the board itself will determine, and the statute sort of determines what's a major and minor change. And sometimes also the subsidizing agency, which in this instance is the state, has a say in it as well. So I talked a little bit about final approval, there is a cost certification, there is limitations on the ownership side that the developer cannot make more than 20% profit on. 20% profit on, of their total development costs. If they make more than that, that money could come back to the community. There is a official process that the developer will go through for that. On the rental side of the project, there's an annual actual check-in. They need to show what their profit is annually, and that is a 10% profit limitation. And then on the affordable units, anybody living in an affordable unit, every year they need to prove that they meet those income limits. So again, it's not just a one time you go into your, your rental unit, it's every, there's checks and balances built in. It's actually a pretty onerous, you know, process for a developer to go through at the end of the day. And I talked about the regulatory agreement. That's going to basically tell the developer for both the ownership and the rental, what their long-term obligations are. We will most likely ask for the affordable units to be in perpetuity. That means that they will never, they will never go away, which is a wonderful thing for a community, especially for, you know, those ownership units. And I talked about the fact that they've got to go to the building department, and probably engineering, you know, when they're done here, they've got to actually design the buildings and engineer the buildings. It's, it's a big process. And we talked about that, we talked about that. And like any other landlord, nuisance laws are going to apply. And, you know, all of, they have to comply with all of the ordinances that anyone else in the community has to comply with. And sometimes, because they have a comprehensive permit, you know, they have, have even more stringent requirements. And other than that, words of wisdom. I think you've got a great Chair. He's doing a really good job. He's asking all the right questions. I did send them just sort of a page that goes through the lip process, as, you know, from start to finish. They can post that as well. And they have professional help, they've got me, they've got the peer reviewers, and all the, the great department heads. And I think that's about it. This will be up. If you want to email me a process question, I'm, I'm happy to do that as well. I've been in the field for around 35 years, and my company is based in Wellesley, and I've got some terrific staff. And I'm going to stop and see if anyone has questions about the 40B process. And I would ask that you hold questions that are very specific to this project until our next meeting. And thank you so much for your time. Oops, that's my notes. You'll see them again. Thank you. Thank you so much for your patience. Now I'm going to blush. Okay, I think this, this young lady was first over here.
Oh, I haven't been called young in a long time. Thank you. Hester Reed, West Street. You brought up fair housing. And I wanted, I used to work for apartment management companies years and years ago on the other coast. And so I don't know a lot about Massachusetts. Could you tell me a little bit about occupancy? How many people are allowed to live in an apartment? Is it like two people per bedroom plus one?
Good question. I don't know off the top of my head, but the developer will have to follow state building permit law, and the occupancy requirements. And it's based on square footage of the unit, and then square footage of, of bedrooms.
Right.
And when, I know for sure, when we work on lotteries, we 100% look at how many people are coming in, and we actually have the big tape measure in our office to measure that. So that will, that will be following state building code.
Okay. You had gone over the affordability income requirements, but you only went up to two people. If they, if we have three-bedroom units,
Yeah.
And if we follow, say, Washington or Oregon, which is two people per bedroom, plus one, working off of a three-bedroom floor plan, two, four, six, now we're up to seven occupants for one three-bedroom apartment, do you have the income requirements that go up that high?
I do.
Okay.
So for us,
You can just jump up to six or seven.
A seven-person household is 121,300.
Okay. Do you know if it's going to be like a managed, is it a real estate investment trust? Is it going to be just a company that's hired? You don't know?
I, I don't, you would have to ask the developer about the management structure. And just so, just to kind of add on to this, income limits in Massa-, well, the, the government, HUD, sets these income limits every year. The income limits change every year, typically if it's not COVID on April 1. And so the income limit gets set on April 1, and, and the standard is that the rent that a developer, a development or management company can charge is one-third of the income. And that needs to include utilities for rental, and for an ownership project, it includes your principal and interest, your insurance, your real estate taxes, your condo fee. So just because I gave you a rent today, or an income limit today, I don't want somebody to come back to me in a year from now and say it changed. It changes every year, and the government makes that determination.
Okay. You had mentioned that 99.9% of 40B projects get sided with the developer in court.
Yep.
Are we able to get somebody local, or even within the state, that won their case against a 40B, so we could figure out how we can beat this in court?
That's a great question.
Sorry to be so negative.
I can't recommend someone to you. I will say that, that whatever 0.1% that lost had to do, because it was a property next to a public well, and it was in a more rural community, and since there are no wells in here, I would, I, you know,
Okay.
I'm just going to, you know,
Well, I would, I would love
It's, it's a very good question.
Perhaps reach out.
I'm, I'm not in a position to make recommendations for attorneys for you.
And last question. During the last meeting, somebody had asked about what it would cost us to deny the 40B, if we had to self-fund and read, and, and ultimately turn down funding, either state funding or federal funding, in order to not continue with the 40B project. I don't know if anybody's done any further research. I certainly haven't, so I apologize for asking a question that I haven't even done research on.
So are you asking what the cost,
As a town.
Cost to a neighborhood would be, or the cost to the town would be?
To the town, to just take this off the table and, and not go there, at least for the, for the recent future.
What would the legal fees be, or what's great?
How much funding do we get, federal and state, because we have 40B in town, and we're not up to the 10%?
None.
Because don't we lose funding? Like, what's our, what's our punishment
For not being at 10%? Are you a housing choice community? I, the, the grants to the town are not, not related to having a 40B project. There are projects out there like a 40R.
Are you saying there's no consequences?
There's no financial
Incentive to have a 40B.
There's no financial incentive to a community to have. The, the municipality has not gotten, outside of the grant to pay for me, the, the, if the town denies a 40B, they're not, as far as I know, there are not grants that are going to go away. I think what you might be thinking of is that there's something that in play called the MBTA Communities Act, and maybe you've heard of that town, Milford, who denied it.
That's next.
So I don't know whether you're, I, I, whether you're an MBTA community or not.
Yeah, well, that's, again, that's coming up in a different department.
So, so, so if, so 40B is separate from MBTA communities?
Oh, I'm not speaking about the MBT communities.
Okay.
I've never heard of that before.
If you deny MBTA communities, you could lose grant funding. But denying a 40B doesn't have a town losing money. As far as what is the legal cost to a municipality to fight a 40B in court, I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay.
You said last meeting, that if we weren't at 10%, then we'd lose money from the state.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't here, so.
No, I said, I said that we have to, I never said we lose money, because I don't know what, if we, we, we need to, if we don't have 10%, chances are, I could say that's likely that they would, they would probably approve this if we didn't. There's no money involved.
So I, I guess, I guess my question is
The state can't overrule it. However, the Housing Appeals Committee, or the Land Court, or Superior Court, it would go into, into a, a court system, if, if, if the town denied it. Or, or if the developer appealed it.
Okay.
And either way, lawyers are expensive, and I'm going to just leave it at that.
Okay. I'm just wondering if whatever expenses that we incur by denying this project and not moving forward, I'm just wondering if East Bridgewater, as a community, would be willing to pay more in taxes just to avoid this type of situation again in the future? I'm not, I don't know. Thank you.
That's up to us.
Thank you.
This gentleman.
I think this side.
Jerry Adams, 202 Short Circle.
I don't need your address.
Quick, easy question.
Oh, it's not a public, it's not public.
Can you post that whole display on the website?
You want me to?
On the website?
Oh, my presentation?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what, now that I just heard what he was talking about, you say we're mandated to have 10% by the state.
No, I said the state looks at that as a threshold.
Threshold. Well, if you go on the state and look at all the towns, and you go to the richer towns, they're at 1% or below. So if, we don't, just because they say we have to be at 10%, doesn't mean the town needs to go to 10%. Correct?
It's correct. And the, and the counterargument is, for those municipalities that have reached 10%, is that enough? It may not be enough. So just so that you know, for this particular project, the ownership units, the affordables, will be counted one for one. The rental units, however, all of the rental units will be counted on your, on your SHI. I, I don't know whether, and Peter may know the answer, I don't know whether it puts you in, in safe harbor for, forever. I, I don't really know. But just because you have units on your SHI doesn't necessarily mean that they're all affordable because of this rental calculation. And it doesn't mean that, that the need has been fulfilled.
So if we don't fulfill that need, what happens to the town?
Again, it's, you know, basically, in order for the municipality to get here today to the ZBA, they had to go to the state and ask for a project eligibility letter. The state determined that this project was eligible to apply for a comprehensive permit. They look at seven standards, and this development met the standards, plus the development had the support of the municipality tied into this very complex sewer district. So basically, whether the town is at 10% or not is not really at play. It's in front of you already.
So we have been hearing that a few times, the two meetings we've been to, that we're under the threshold, we need to get to 10% or above.
Yes. And so you would have, somebody would have had to say within 15 days of the opening hearing, we disagree, we're at 10%, or we have this or that, there were safe harbors. That, that has passed.
It starts at the very
It's that, that, the, the ability to stop the hearings here has passed. So right now, the process is to go through the, 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 this very, very rig-, it is going to be a very rigorous review process. I will say I started reading the peer reviews, and I needed a cup of coffee.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
This gentleman was next.
Okay, we'll go to the other side.
Hi, Kevin Fontana, 25 North Ridge Drive. My question, given the, the current housing crisis in the state, and, and what the state's doing with the, the immigrant population and whatnot, is there any way that the state can come into a 40B project like this, and buy up the units, and use them for immigrants coming in the, in the, the state?
I, I have no idea. I, I think that, I, I mean, you know, I, I don't know what, what the state has planned. I know that they, you know, that, you know, they, they have been using underutilized properties, like, you know, state schools and whatnot. Any, anything is possible. Any, the state could go and do that in your existing 40B, or, you know, right now. So I think it's really
They're all old, right?
It, it, you know, I don't, I don't, I can't see in the state's minds as to where they want to place people. But they
Is that, is that something that we can put in as a condition? When you say if we're going to approve this project with conditions, can that be that these can't be sold to the state?
I, I think it would be very difficult, because the state, at the end of the day, is, is approving this. And because, again, you know, there fear housing laws that need to, to, to be protected. I, you know, I, 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 it's, it's a tough, it's a tough situation all the way around right now, with the number of households needing house, housing in the state today. In any state right now. It's not just Massachusetts.
So I'm just, just trying to understand the process with what you said for conditions.
Yeah, and I
Can we put conditions on anything, or is, like, is that something that would be an optional condition to consider?
And I kind of wanted to stick to process here. I'm, you know, a little bit nervous
And that's what I'm asking about, is process. Like, can that, is that part of a, a normal process or not?
I think putting, putting on a condition on a tenant's background violates fair housing. I, you asked me the question, but it, it would be, I, I, it violates fair housing. And you cannot say, the landlord,
Doesn't selling them to the state violate fair housing too? I mean, you're not giving other people an opportunity.
The landlord most likely is going to be doing, you know, criminal background checks, they're going to be doing credit checks, they're going to be doing landlord screening, all of that. They're going to do that for the market rate residents, they're going to do that for the affordable residents. They're, they have a business too. They want to make sure that the party coming into their unit is, I can't say they're going to do all three, but chances are they're going to do a couple of those. But it would, I
I, I understand. If the state just buys them up, though, and is plopping immigrants in, like, does the developer have any say at that point in time? You know, who goes in there?
I mean, I'm sorry, but my parents came through Ellis Island, so we're all immigrants.
I understand, I, I understand that too. But it's just given the situation that there is right now.
I understand your concerns. I can tell you, again, that most, that, that there are multiple screening levels as to qualifying people to live in market rate units and affordable units, and that you cannot discriminate against somebody's situation.
And I'm not saying that. I'm just wanting to know if the state can buy up this whole thing, or a section of this thing, and do what it wants with it. That's, that's my question.
You know, the state, the state can come in,
With a 40B like this, I just didn't know if they could do that.
By eminent domain and take your home. You know, I just, I feel it's really unfair to speculate.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I know it's not the answer you want. We're going to go back to this side.
I just wanted to know, I know 40Bs are necessary. I just want to know, what about the apartments and all the other things that are coming into this development? East Bridgewater is a beautiful, tiny, little town. To destroy it with this great, big conglomeration is horrible. And I'm just wondering, can they scale back, or is it done? Is it a done deal? This is what we're getting, all these 40Bs, the rentals, the townhouses. They're not necessary.
I think that that's a question I'll ask you to come back and ask during a public, the actual public hearing.
Well, this is a part of, this is a part of the process. So you're talking about 40Bs, and that they're necessary?
Yes.
Okay, so what about the rentals?
I, I will say that oftentimes, when projects are peer reviewed, projects change. Whether or not there are decreases in units, sometimes that happens. I, again, I'm very new to this project. I literally got hired at noon time today. So I will say that it, the important part, or the process by this review, rigorous review process, is going to determine how the project is going to look at the end of the day.
And that's what I'm asking. Is this a done deal? Is this the way it's going to be this great big, or can they cut back?
Yeah, we've already heard from, you know, from the attorney, that they've gotten peer review comments, and they've got to look at the site plan, and things are going to be added, and things are going to be taken away. So I guess the short answer is that it is a process. So no, it is not done. But I don't want someone to come back for me and say, from six months, that it's the same amount of, you know, units. That, that is not what is, you know, that I, I can control. The process is going to control that.
Okay.
So it's, 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 it's a development process, it's a review process.
Hi.
Hi. Sorry, me again.
Yeah.
Some language that you could put into some sort of agreement would be perhaps to deny third-party vouchers.
Oh, the state would never go for that.
Really? They don't allow that in Massachusetts?
Absolutely not. In fact
Many private, many private communities are allowed to deny third-party vouchers.
In fact, the state is going to actually ask in the lottery plan for you to state that vouchers are accepted. Period. Yeah.
So that's Section 8?
There's many different There's many different, you know, sec, there's many different kind of vouchers. There's VASH vouchers, which are for veterans. There are, you know, so there, there are different, there are different kind of vouchers out there. But yeah, about, all a voucher means is that the government, that you're paying a third year income towards rent, and the government is paying the rest.
Eileen Needham, 9 Marion Lane. When you first started speaking, you said this was not subsidized housing.
It's not.
You said this is going to be people who make a little bit less money. One person, $68,000.
Yeah.
They're going to pay their own rent based on whatever-
Yep.
-the thing is. But now you're saying, if I'm not, if I'm understanding-
I'm saying that they cannot buy vouchers.
That there can be Section 8 people in there.
But with, that voucher needs to actually be able to cover the rent at 80% of AMI. I don't know whether or not someone's going to have a voucher that's actually able to cover this rent. It's possible, I don't know. Most vouchers are for units that are at 30, 50, or 60% of AMI. They're not for 80% of AMI units because the voucher itself doesn't pay enough rent. But I will say that the state will not allow you to discriminate against voucher holders. Thank you.
One, Bond Street. One question nobody's asked is the assessment for the taxes. The tax assessor needs to look at this whole project and find out or figure out what are they going to be taxing this whole project to cover the additional expenses to the town? Have they looked at that yet?
Again, this is, is feeling like it's project-specific, so I'm going to answer it in a very general way, where I would, because real estate taxes are a very large expense item, a very large operating number, I would expect that at some point in the process, a developer would sit down with the tax assessor and see how they are going to approach the assessment for this. There are rules and regulations for assessing processes, it's very, very intense.
Okay, well, what I'm asking is if the board would ask the assessor to look at this project, calculate what they're going to tax it at, and then try to figure out the offset of the additional expense or burden to the town, how much of that is going to be covered by the taxes collected from this particular housing project?
Yeah.
Another question I had is how much money-
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm not done yet. How much money is coming from the state to fund this project?
I, so let me just take them one at a time. What you're asking is whether or not a developer will do something called a fiscal impact analysis?
No. I'm asking the question, how much money is the state paying for this?
Wait, let me explain to you what- I'm answering your first question. So your first question is, what a fiscal impact analysis does is it looks at the intake of funds and the expense of funds. Typically fiscal impact analysis are not done under 40B. It's something you, you can ask, the board can discuss. I doubt very much someone is going to agree to do that. It's done, you know, the developer probably provided a set of numbers during the project eligibility process.
Yeah, they said $45 million it's going to cost, they're going to put $5 million in their pocket.
You know what, again, I feel like we're going in, we're going into details of the project.
The questions actually should be geared to them.
Okay, but we're not-
Is the state helping them fund this project, or are they taking out a bank loan that's secured by the state?
I don't have any idea as to what the project financing is. So that's not part of, this is, again, this is process. I don't know, you know, how, how the project will be funded.
If you don't know the answer, just say you don't know the answer.
I don't have the answer to, to that.
I'd also like to say to the school superintendent, which gave us a low-ball number on potential students, shame on you, if she's still here.
I guess we're past that, which is-
I know we're past that, but she low-balled it without proper investigation of what's actually going to be in these buildings. I'm just raising the question so that people are aware of those situations.
This is, again, about process.
It is part of the process.
Thank you. Young Lee?
I don't want to interrupt him or be interrupted when I ask my question.
I think it's, it's getting, what's our, what our cutoff time is 9:30?
Yep.
Excellent.
And I've got one last comment, and then I'm done. If it turns out that the state is going to be paying the rent and filling this with illegals, you call them immigrants, whatever you want to call them, their legal status is illegal. So if the state is going to be coughing up the money to pay the rent, the question is how many illegals are going to be put into this housing project?
Okay. And what's your, I'm, I'm-
That's all.
I, I have a question. You mentioned health.
Health.
You need to identify yourself. For our record, you need to identify-
Oh, okay, yeah, Annette Goodwin, Thatcher Street.
Thank you. I know you always talk to me each time.
Well, some people didn't, so.
I know, you did ask.
But anyways, in your presentation, you mentioned health.
Health and safety.
Given the, what, can you elaborate on that, given, you know, the current situation with Stewart Medical, you know, Noshova Valleys, their hospitals, you know, all, does that relate to this? And if it does, how is this adding more units, given that Good Samaritan's part of Stewart Medical that will be closing? What it, I would like the board to consider, consider that as well.
Yeah, I'm not, I can tell you, I, I can't tell you about what is coming and what is going. I can tell you that a traffic peer review is going to be done, that a water capacity testing is going to be done. We've heard something about water quality being done. All of these items are going to, stormwater management, all of those items are going to, going to be reviewed, and, and those go-
Does that include hospitals and everything as well? Is that what you're referencing? Because-
No, I, I don't, it's not, it's not healthcare, it's health and safety.
Health, well, which then is the hospitals.
So if, if, if somebody, if, if, whatever, if there's, again, is there water pressure? Can you take a shower? You know, those are the kinds of health issues that I'm talking about.
But if there's an emergency at the EMTs, that's also health as well.
Is there crash data? You know, like, is there, is there, you know, is an intersection that needs to be redesigned? Again, I don't know, but, but those are the safety and health issues.
So is that a, no, it doesn't, it's simple? Yes or no?
I, I, I don't know how, I've not had an actual hospital.
It's not, okay, well, I would ask the board to consider that, considering the whole community, including, you know, the fellow board members, to consider, you know, Stewart Medical's current situation. And that is also a state issue, so hopefully the state will also take that into consideration because Good Samaritan is part of that, and Stewart Medical's going bankrupt, as we all know. It's, you know, it's on the news. So please highly consider that as well. Thank you.
Given, given the timeframe, Mrs. Wolf, I'm going to let you be the final-
Very quick. Brockton Hospital is opening next week. So if you're worried about your health, you can go there.
Mr. Gardner, this will, Mr. Gardner from the planning board, this is going to wrap it up for the evening.
I just had one quick comment, and I want to correct an absolutely incorrect statement that was made a short time ago. And a statement was made that the majority of the high-income communities in the state are down in the 1%, 2% levels. That's absolutely false.
I live, I-
The majority of those high-income communities are up in the 5%, 6%, and 7% levels, and many of them are above 10.
Yeah. I live in one.
So that statement is flat-out false.
All right, we're going to, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Please adjourn and continue.
Yes.
To the date certain.
Yeah, everybody's on it. Motion to adjourn and continue, again, a motion? Motion made by Kevin Second, by Jerry O'Leary, favor.
Date certain to a date certain.
Date certain, on a date certain, October.
Just a quick procedural. Housekeeping, with the peer review, our engineers just would like your permission, it's pretty typical, your permission for our engineers to talk directly to the peer reviewer?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming.